Order, look at the gallery tonight. I tell you what, we are a city of heroes, aren't we? You better believe it. If I can call this meeting to order, then we're going to invite Chaplain Robert Smithberger from the Virginia Beach Police Department.
My friends, as we assemble here this evening, let us pray. Loving and gracious God, you are the author of all that is good. We are blessed to be in your presence as our city council members, as well as citizens gather here this evening to conduct the business of governing the wonderful city of Virginia Beach. Lord, you have taught us to pursue peace and to care for those in need in order to make our community, city, and world a better place. For the members of our city council, I ask you to provide them the strength, fortitude, determination, and compassion necessary to perform their duties with honor and dedication, and in only the way that you can, Lord. Keep all the citizens of our community, law enforcement, as well as all first responders safe, and bestow your divine protection on them all. We ask these things in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen. And if we may have a moment of silence for all those brave heroes who have paid the ultimate price to protect our city, and also keep in mind their families. Okay, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all. Madam Clerk, do we have a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, all present.
Okay, could I ask her motion for the certification of the closed session?
Second.
Okay, let's open the vote.
One second. The vote is open. Vice Minister Wilson, may I have your vote? You can give me, um, thank you. By a vote of eleven to zero, you've certified the closed session and been accorded with a motion to recess.
And Madam Clerk, I just want someone to say I was not there the entire time.
Yes, ma'am, the minutes will reflect that for next time.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the formal session of March 11, 2025, the informal and formal sessions of March 18, 2025, and the formal session of March 25, 2025?
So moved.
Okay, let's open the vote.
Mr. Mayor, I need to abstain from the, I was not present March 25.
Um, Councilmember Schulman will note the abstention. If you'll just vote yes for the rest, that's fine. The vote is open. By a vote of eleven to zero, noting Councilmember Schulman's abstention for March 25, the minutes have been approved as submitted.
Okay, this is a time when our council really enjoys honoring those who deserve the honor. And we have, do we have maybe Amy Darby, founder and president of Eliza's Mom and Eliza's Hope Came Here? Come on up. Welcome. Okay, it's my honor to read this. Whereas autism spectrum disorder, ASD, is a complex and developmental disability that affects individuals in varying degrees, causing significant challenges in social interaction, communication, and behavior. These symptoms typically emerge in early childhood and continue through the individual's life. Whereas individuals with ASD may experience differences in how they learn, process information, and interact with or respond to the world around them. These differences should be understood and respected as part of the broader spectrum of human diversity. Whereas autism is a spectrum, meaning that it manifests uniquely in each individual, and no two individuals with autism are alike. This diversity should be recognized and embraced as it highlights the individuality and potential of each person. And whereas Autism Awareness Month serves as an opportunity to increase public awareness, promote acceptance, and celebrate the rich and diverse contributions of individuals with autism. It calls on communities to foster an environment of inclusion and understanding, and respect for people on the autism spectrum and their families. And whereas, according to the 2025 data from the Centers of Disease Control, approximately one in 36 children in the U.S. is diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder. This highlights the need for continued research, education, and advocacy. And whereas there is no known cure for autism, individuals with ASD can thrive and lead a fulfilling lives when provided with appropriate therapies, support systems, and accommodations tailored to their unique needs. And whereas numerous member-led organizations and advocacy groups throughout Virginia Beach are dedicated to supporting individuals with autism and their families. These organizations play a critical role in raising awareness, providing resources, and advocating for full inclusion and equal opportunities for individuals with autism at every level of society and government. And whereas it is essential that we continue to work together to ensure individuals with autism have access to the services, education, and opportunities they need to reach their full potential, and that they are respected as valued members of our communities. Therefore, I, Robert M. Bobby Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, do hereby proclaim Autism Awareness Month in Virginia Beach, and I call upon all citizens in Virginia Beach to learn more about autism spectrum disorder, to engage in activities that promote inclusion, and support efforts that advocate for the well-being and rights of individuals on the autism spectrum. Let us work together to create a world that is more inclusive, accepting, and supportive of people with autism and their families.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you so much. Um, thank you all so much.
Just leave your paperwork.
Oh, okay.
Thank you all so much. It's an honor to be here this evening. My name is Amy Darby, and I am the founder of the Eliza Hope Foundation, and I am Eliza's mom. My daughter, Eliza, was diagnosed with autism in 2014. On that day, our family was thrown into a world we knew nothing about, and it was very scary. There were very few places to go for information, therapies, and there were very few programs specifically designed for children with autism. But we also saw firsthand the beauty, strength, and uniqueness that comes with neurodiversity. Eliza passed away in 2016 at four years old from complications of epilepsy, and that is when I decided to do something for our community and Eliza's memory. Starting this foundation was born out of both hope and love, and a need for understanding, support, and hope for families like ours. Today, the Eliza Hope Foundation stands as a safe and nurturing place where children on the autism spectrum are seen, supported, and celebrated. Beyond therapy, services, and support, what we advocate for most is acceptance and kindness. Awareness is only the beginning. Acceptance is what changes lives. Every person, regardless of how they communicate, learn, or experience the world, deserves compassion and inclusion. Eliza taught us that, that every child is worthy, that different is not less, and that kindness is powerful. To help share her story and keep her light shining, we've brought a book that I wrote this year for each of you today, a book that tells Eliza's story. It's our way of saying thank you and inviting you to see the world through her eyes. Thank you for helping us honor not only Eliza's legacy, but the millions of individuals and families living with autism today. Let us carry this message out into the world of love, acceptance, and hope, not just this month, but always. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and you and your organization are a major reason why Virginia Beach is considered the most caring city in the country.
Thank you.
Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you.
And next up is the City of Virginia Beach Saves Week and America Saves Week. And do we have Alice Testerman and Audrey Edwards here from those organizations? Yeah, come on down. And I asked my friend and colleague, Cash Green, if he would be so kind to do the honors. Welcome.
Welcome. Come on down. Whereas personal and household savings is fundamental to the city of Virginia Beach's stability and vitality, and whereas adequate emergency savings, retirement funds, safe debt, income ratio, and financial confidence are critical components of personal financial security. And whereas America Saves is a national campaign that empowers Americans to take actions towards financial stability through saving money to reduce debt and build wealth. And whereas the city of Virginia Beach is a participating organization in the America Saves Week campaign, and is committed to helping its citizens take necessary actions towards financial stability, no matter their status. Now, therefore, I, Robert M. Bobby Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, do hereby proclaim April 7 through 11, 2025, City of Virginia Beach Saves Week and America Saves Week. In Virginia Beach, I call upon all citizens to start or increase an emergency fund, encourage split deposit for savings, encourage open savings accounts, begin or increase 401 contributions, learn and available financial resources in your community, and take other positive saving actions during the City of Virginia Beach Saves Week and America Saves Week, and pledge to sustain that action during the following year. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, to be affixed this first day of April, 2025.
I'm Audrey Edwards, and I am the Bank on Hampton Roads Regional Coordinator. And the Bank on Hampton Roads is a free financial literacy education program that we offer citizens, anyone. We have citizens from all over the country taking our program because we are unique in that we offer in-person and virtual classes. We also have a match savings program, and we offer five courses per month, starting in February and September. And unlike the other 104 coalitions, Bank on Coalitions, we are the only ones that do this. And I'm not going to jump the gun, but I will say we are an award-winning program, and that will come out later.
Great, thank you. Appreciate you. We often refer to Virginia Beach as a city of heroes because it's true. And I asked my friend and colleague, Michael Berluci, if he would take the reins on the next one.
Thank you, Mayor. And if I could invite all the public safety professionals who are here to receive recognition to come into the, near the podium, if you'd like to, now.
You're gonna have to tell them, too.
Well, come on down.
Come on, folks, you're all welcome. Come on.
Welcome.
You can do it.
Maybe you should tell them, too, chief.
Yeah.
Yeah, you come in, too, yeah.
But, and while you're gathering there, I'll just go ahead and start. I'd like to, before I read, just say a few words. Our professionals from Virginia Beach have done an extraordinary thing, not once, but twice recently. First, deploying to Washington, D.C., to serve our country during the certification of the results of the presidential election on January 6, and then again to serve our country during the presidential inauguration. And each and every day, we know that public safety professionals in Virginia Beach stand in the gap between danger and safety, between, stand in the gap between chaos and peace. And for that, you're deserving of our recognition and our appreciation each and every day. But in this case, it's extraordinary because you did that in service to our country. And you represented the city of Virginia Beach with distinction, as you always do, and your efforts helped to secure the peaceful transfer of power, which is fundamental to our American tradition. And that is an accomplishment that is deserving of this recognition and much more. And for that, I know my colleagues on the city council and members of our community are grateful for your efforts and your professional efforts and your representation of the city of Virginia Beach in those efforts. So I'd like to read the resolution now. Whereas the peaceful and orderly transition of government is a fundamental principle of our democracy, and whereas the presidential inauguration that occurs every four years in Washington, D.C., requires extensive coordination and security efforts to ensure the safety of attendees, dignitaries, and the general public, and whereas the U.S. Capitol Police, through a mutual aid agreement with the Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office, requested assistance with the security of the counting and certification of electoral votes and the 2025 presidential inauguration, and whereas members of the Virginia Beach Police Department and Sheriff's Office committed resources which played a critical role in ensuring safety during the presidential inauguration, and whereas Virginia Beach Police Officers, Sheriff's Deputies, and the Department of Emergency Management Director joined more than 25,000 law enforcement and military personnel from across the United States as part of a collaborative effort to maintain public safety, provide logistical support, and respond to emergency needs during this historic event. And whereas these dedicated law enforcement officers and deputies worked long hours under challenging conditions, demonstrating professionalism, courage, and unwavering commitment to public service, and whereas the efforts of the following individuals contributed to a successful and secure certification of votes and inauguration, upholding the highest standards of duty and public trust. And for the sake of time, I'm not going to read each and every name that's listed on this resolution, but there are many, and we thank each and every one of you. Whereas Virginia Beach law enforcement personnel are proud to be part of this important part of our nation's democracy every four years, and to serve shoulder to shoulder with thousands of other dedicated law enforcement professionals with a steadfast commitment to representing Virginia Beach with integrity and professionalism. And now therefore be it resolved by the council of the City of Virginia Beach, the City of Virginia Beach City Council do hereby extend our deepest appreciation to the members of the Virginia Beach Police Department, Sheriff's Office, and Department of Emergency Management for your exemplary service and dedication during the 2025 inauguration. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to the respective departments as a token of our gratitude and recognition of your outstanding contributions to the safety and well-being of our community and our country. We're very proud of you. Thank you very much. And if I could, I'd like to invite the entire council to join me for a photo with these incredible professionals. Thank you.
Come on down. Okay, we're going to finish the evening with a really cool proclamation. How about the Cox High School wrestling team? Come on forward, and the coaches, and all people involved, you, too, Anne Farrell-Tater. And we're going to have our friend and district representative of Cox, Stacy Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Among the things I've done in my life, and probably one of the most rewarding, was my involvement with wrestling. I started as a youth league coach, did that for several years, and then went on to coach high school. And I know what it takes to build a successful program. Didn't always do it, but I knew what it took. So I know that it takes supporters, it takes dedicated parents, it takes dedicated people in the community that support your program. And Cox definitely has that. They have my good friend, Mr. Bruce Rader, and our state delegate, Anne Farrell-Tater. It also takes an incredible feeder program. And Mr. Brett Casier spent many years feeding talent into this program. And it's not easy to do all the time sitting in those gym bleachers watching other kids wrestle. But it takes that kind of dedication to keep a program fed. The other thing it takes is tradition. And it takes somebody for these guys to look up to and say, I know what it takes in order to be successful, and I can work that hard, and if I do, I'll get the rewards. And Cox has no better representative of that than four-time state champion, Mr. Colin Dozier, who's with us tonight. So, having said all that. Whereas this body hereby recognizes and celebrates the remarkable achievement of the Frank W. Cox High School men's wrestling team for securing back-to-back Virginia State High School Wrestling Class V Championships during the 2023 and 2024 seasons. And whereas the commitment demonstrated by this group of young wrestlers was evident from the very first day of tryouts. Their dedication and passion for the sport were clear from the moment they stepped onto the mat. And whereas the Cox Wrestling Team is the proud five-time defending regional champion, continuing in their tradition of excellence in the sport of wrestling. And whereas the momentum gained from previous championships continues to inspire and propel these athletes forward, fueling their drive for excellence and success in every competition. And whereas Cox High School placed an impressive 11 out of 12 state qualifiers at the 2024 Virginia State Wrestling Tournament, earning the Falcons a commanding 50-point victory while leading the tournament in multiple categories, including the most pins, 21, most technical falls, six, and the most total match points. And whereas wrestling requires immense discipline, and while it is often seen as an individual competition, these athletes understand that success is rooted in teamwork, with each member supporting and elevating one another toward a common goal. And whereas Carl Ludwig II claimed the individual state championship in the 150-pound division, and Rudy Wagner triumphed as the individual state champion in the 190-pound division, exemplifying the skill and determination of Cox's athletes. And whereas head coach Dalton Head, along with his dedicated coaching staff, Adam Watson, James Schubert, Dylan Watson, Dave Cahill, Jeff Head, and Billy Wagner, demonstrated unwavering commitment guiding and preparing their athletes with passion, discipline, and leadership throughout the entire year. And now therefore be it resolved that the members of the city council, both individually and collectively, extend their heartfelt congratulations and commendations to the Frank W. Cox High School Wrestling Team, head coach Dalton Head, student activities director Jessica Bowman, and the entire Cox High School community for their outstanding dedication, sportsmanship, and success, both on and off the mat. Go Falcons! I'd like to ask Councilman Remick if he would join me, because he's also represents your district. your district.
See what we got.
Assistant.
We got it.
Assistant Coach.
Is this thing on? Thank you guys so much for having us. Super proud of these guys. I would, I'd be remiss, remiss, I'd be ashamed if I didn't thank Dr. Kelly, the principal, and Jessica Bowman, the athletic director. There's been many people that were a part of me getting down here to be a part of this program, and it's just been a pleasure to be captain of this ship. The guys are the best that you could ask for, they'll, you know, they do what you ask, they work as hard as you can ever expect. We've got a great feeder program in the Great Neck Wrestling Club and Great Neck Middle School, and we really got a good thing going. So I hope to see you next year, and we're not going anywhere anytime soon.
Yay! Giving honors to deserving people is one of the highlights of every council meeting. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to public hearings. First one is Lisa City Property, Virginia Museum of Contemporary Art, Moca, 222 Parks Avenue.
There are no speakers, sir.
Okay. Next, acquisition of agricultural land preservation, ARP Easement, installation purchase agreements for 36.17 plus or minus acres located at the 200 block of Princess Anne Road.
There are no speakers, sir.
All right, and the third one is D 53.34 plus or minus acres located at the 300 block of Princess Anne Road.
There are no speakers.
Okay, are there any speakers signed up for the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no speakers, so everything will be on consent. So under K ordinances, number one is the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a franchise agreement with Cavalier Associates LLC for a beach operations on the sandy beach east of the resort hotels at 4101 and 4201 Atlantic Avenue. Number two is the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a franchise agreement with Venture Waves LLC for the use of portions of 18th Street, 20th Street, and Arctic Avenue adjacent to the Atlantic Park raid, the valet services. Number three is ordinance to grant 14 franchise agreements for outdoor cafes in the resort areas. A is Basil LLC, B is Corelli LLC, C is C-Ha, excuse me, D is EE-EE LLC, E is Las Palmas Boardwalk, number F is Kamalis Inc., G is Seda Inc., H is Curry LLC, L is Virginia George Company Inc., J is Planet Pizza Inc., K is VB's Raw Bar Inc., number L is 11th Street Tap House, number M is the Dunes Restaurant Associates, and N is Crestline Hotels and Resorts. Number four is the ordinance to adopt the attainable workforce housing performance grant program and to authorize certain actions in furtherance thereof. Number five is the ordinance to extend the date for satisfying the conditions in the matter of Virginia Beach Ava Ray LLC, ready the closure of a portion of an unnamed, unimproved right-of-way adjacent to 2375 Virginia Beach Boulevard. Number six is the ordinance to establish capital improvement project 10701 Princess Anne Road Water Transmission Main to accept and appropriate $299,786 from the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation of, to FY 2024/25 capital improvement program to project number 10701 and promote a, a local match of $33,310 from the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. Number seven is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $1,857,318 from the Virginia Department of Transportation to the FY 2024/25 Public Works Operation Budget, Ray Road Maintenance and Related Equipment. Number eight is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $1,000 from the Newport News Police Department to the FY 2024/25 Emergency Communications and Citizen Service operating budget rate donation to affected emergency communications and citizen services staff working the overnight shift from February 21 to February 22, 2025. Number nine is the ordinance to transfer $2,164,338 from Capital Project 10251 London Bridge Commerce Center to Capital Project 1262 Lynn Haven Parkway Corridor improvements, ready to allow the execution of a construction contract. Move for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Just, can I make a comment, Mayor? Thank you, Mayor. I just want to bring the public's attention, the ordinance for the attainable workforce housing grant program is a very significant step for our city to take. It will really move the needle for attainable workforce housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Mayor, if I could make a comment as well, I just want to call out the appropriation for the Lynn Haven Parkway Corridor improvements. Also a very significant improvement, Lynn Haven, Lynn Haven District, Lynn Haven Commercial District is an economic engine for the City of Virginia Beach. Lynn Haven Mall is the last successful commercial mall in the region, thriving, something that we should be really proud of and grateful for in the City of Virginia Beach and all the surrounding businesses, large and small, that populate that area, drive our economy, provide work opportunities. And this new improvement that was really spearheaded by my predecessor on council, Shannon Kane, is going to provide a greater sense of arrival, beautification, improvement, finally giving the Lynn Haven Corridor, which is important and valuable to our city, the investment and resources that it has long deserved. And it's, I just didn't want it to go without noting that I'm grateful for the council and for the community's investment, and it will pay off in dividends because Lynn Haven Corridor, commercial corridor is thriving. Thank you.
Okay, Amelia?
Yes, I would just like to say that the ordinance to do with attainable workforce would be a great game changer for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's open the vote. Here we go.
The vote is open. By a vote of 11 to 0, you approve the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, great, moving on to appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Bayfront Advisory Commission to appoint Ed Amoroso, Development Authority to appoint Isabel Meeks, the Southeastern Public Service Authority of Virginia, Jerry Brown, and the Virginia Beach Cannabis Advisory Force to appoint Captain Michael R. Clark, Representative of Police Department. Move for approval.
Okay, so move.
The vote's open. By a vote of 11 to 0, you have appointed those as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, great. Is there any unfinished business? Any new business? Okay, we are adjourned to open mic. Thank you.